... session on the new code. So Mike, you're introduced to website.
First of all, thank you very much to the Commission for taking extra time today to come in and learn about the public hearing draft of the zoning ordinance that's now available online at www.plandsm.org. The meeting is being broadcast today for the benefit of the public. So again, the purpose of today's meeting is to kind of give you an overview and have some discussions so that we can create familiarity with the new code. This is not a debate session over the draft. You can make comments about certain sections or ask questions about that, but there's no decisions being made today at all. Your public hearing per the tentative schedule that's online, the earliest that would be would be July 18th. And so we have two of these work sessions or workshops with the Commission to try and kind of walk through the code and make sure there's an understanding of the code. We do have several new Commissioners since Plan DSM was adopted and since the last draft of the zoning ordinance was made available. And so if you'll bear with me, I'm going to run through kind of a brief overview. This is the same presentation that was made yesterday to the developer group as well as at last night's public meeting. So if you bear with me, I'll run through those fairly briefly and then we'll open it up to questions and comments if that's acceptable. Also, we do have our regular meeting scheduled to start at 6:00 PM. And before then, there are sandwiches and water on the counter over there for the Commission before your meeting starts at 6 o'clock tonight. So again, thank you for your time today ahead of this. So just Tyler, if you could go to the computer, please. So on your screens in front of you, just again, a brief overview. Plan DSM was adopted in April of 2016, so we're in our third year with the new comprehensive plan for the city. This chart is really just intended again for the benefit of new Commissioners and people that might be watching this meeting, understanding how all of these different plans relate and where they fit in together. Plan DSM was the comprehensive plan that was adopted, and that's what I call the citizens' plan. That's why it's at the top of this chart. We did extensive public outreach to get input from the citizenry on what they saw as the vision for Des Moines, what Des Moines would look like in 2040 and beyond. And so that has been the umbrella for all of these other planning efforts that have gone on. About the same time that Plan DSM was adopted, the Council approved Guide DSM, which was the Council's strategic plan. And that plan took policies from the Plan DSM and started to prioritize when and which items we wanted to work on first as part of implementation of Plan DSM. It also set out a schedule for funding and of those priorities. So as you can see on the third line of this chart, these are several activities that are guided by Plan DSM and Guide DSM. Obviously, on the far left of that chart is the zoning code. This is more than just a zoning code. We have a zoning, planning, and design code that we'll be explaining here in a minute. We have Move DSM, which was the master transportation plan for the city, the first standalone master transportation plan for the city of Des Moines. Previously, we had just relied on the MPO's regional transportation plan for ours. This is very significant. It was adopted within the last year and led to discussions about should the Southwest Connector continue to be on the transportation network? Should we continue to build wider roadways or should we realize and utilize existing roadway widths and actually reprogram some of those roadway widths for complete streets? So a very, very important document that was called for by Plan DSM and we're very happy to have implemented. Nodes and corridor plans, as you're aware, our neighborhood planning staff has been doing revisions to the neighborhood revitalization program, which has resulted in some target neighborhoods that we're working in right now and some changes to that process. Live DSM is the Parks and Recreation Department's master plan, also called for by Plan DSM, and that was adopted within the last year. And then finally, the CIP budgeting and capital budget and operating budgets of the city all are basically implementing Plan DSM with direction from Guide DSM and the Council's strategic planning efforts. Connect Downtown falls under that master transportation plan. As you recall, we adopted it as an element of. So that's just kind of the different planning activities that have been going on. This is a very significant time for Des Moines. We haven't had this much, I mean, true comprehensive planning activity for a number of years. In some instances, like the master transportation plan, never holistically for just the city of Des Moines. So very, very fortunate to have these documents guiding us. Just a quick overview. You all, I want to thank you for stopping in and picking up your copies of the draft of the code. Just a quick overview of how the code is organized. Basically, there's two chapters. Chapter 134 is zoning in this code, just like we have 134 zoning today. Chapter 135 is planning and design. That basically replaces, chapter 135 essentially replaces, chapter 82 that's in our code today. A lot of people, what we found is, don't know that chapter 82 even exists. We get a lot of calls about that, wondering where the site plan, where are these site plan regulations coming from? And so one of the purposes of this reorganization of the city code was to put planning and design and zoning in consecutive chapters so that they followed each other, and we're in close proximity to help with that communication of the rules for development. Key changes from our existing configuration. Today, under zoning, we have things like front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, building heights, items like that that are in zoning. In this proposal, those types of regulations have been moved into planning and design chapter. What has remained in the zoning chapter is still the zoning districts and the zoning map, creation of the zoning map. So the districts that are on the map, the uses that are allowed in those districts. And then we also have things such as wireless telecommunications regulations that are in the zoning chapter. We still have signs that are in the zoning chapter. And then the non-conforming uses section is in this still, and administrative procedures for the zoning chapter of the code. Under 135, planning and design now, you can see we have things that were previously similar to zoning are now design chapters. This really is an expansion of what we've been doing for about 22 years as the city of Des Moines. We've had the NPC Neighborhood Pedestrian Commercial Zoning District in place since 1998 in Des Moines. And that was the first foray that we took into design guidelines and moving things from zoning, that were typically zoning, into a design chapter, the site plan regulation chapter. It created site plan review by planning commission, which has been expanded to include a number of things. So currently in chapter 82, the first was the Neighborhood Pedestrian Commercial District that had design guidelines. It allowed 40% reduction in parking that's normally required by the code to be granted by site plan review. It allowed, it talked about putting buildings up at the street setbacks. It talked about building heights. It talked about percentage of glass on the front of a building for storefront. All of those things have been in place since 1998. That's been expanded multiple times since 1998. That chapter 82 was expanded to include things like the C3B and DR zoning districts, design guidelines. We added vehicle display lots, site plan standards. We added convenience store site plan standards and multifamily site plan review standards. All came under the purview of the planning commission. And the key change of doing that was it took those items out of the purview of the zoning board of adjustment and put them in the hands of the Plan and Zoning Commission. The Board of Adjustment only has purview over chapter 134 and zoning. The planning commission has purview and staff have purview over chapter 135 in this code, just like you have purview over chapter 82 today. So we'll get to kind of each of kind of the design items that are in this chapter, but just in general, it's buildings, placement on a site, heights of buildings, building materials are covered in this chapter, 135, landscaping, parking. Those are the types of things that have been moved into entirely into a planning and design chapter of this proposed set of ordinances. Again, I think probably the easiest way to utilize this code is to follow this 10-step guide that we have available on our Plan DSM website. It's very difficult to read these codes front to back. I would not recommend doing that. It will be very hard to, one, stay awake and two, find what you're looking for in there. I think there's methodology of going through that code and these 10-step, this 10-step guide really helps with that, and I'll run through it very quickly. Under the new ordinances, you still start with a zoning map. We have our existing zoning map and the proposed zoning map. Previously, when we released the draft of the code two years ago, year and a half ago, the maps were a series of six sections of the city. They were PDFs. People had to zoom in on them to try and find a property, and they weren't quite certain where they were exactly in the neighborhood when they were trying to find that. When we took over the mapping from the consultants for the zoning map in-house, our IT department created a zoning map application that can be accessed from the Plan DSM website. And I think the nice feature about the zoning map application is that it's very similar to the Find My House application that's on the city's website in that you can search an address specific by typing it in the search bar, and it'll take you to that area on the map. From that application, you can use the arrow buttons to toggle between proposed and existing maps. We have had some questions about how do you print that map? And there is not a print button on the application. Part of that is because for accessibility requirements on mobile applications, we have too many buttons. They have to be a minimum size, and they're covering up the map when you start to access the map from the phone. So we purposely did not add a print button. What I would recommend most people, if they want to print a copy of the draft map or existing and proposed, you can go into the application and on your computer, home computer or library computer, you can zoom to whatever extent of the map that you're wanting to just by using the roller on your mouse. Once you get to the extent or the area that you're wanting to print, what I'd recommend doing is a print screen function on your computer. Open up a Word document and paste that print screen into the Word document. You can adjust the margins, you can adjust the page size, and you can print, you can also adjust the size of the document that you just pasted and print from there. We did not print a bunch of copies of this because this map will be updated as we're going through this hearing process and continue our reviews. So it'll be out of date very quickly, and it'd be a waste of paper to print all of those maps. So again, I would encourage people to use the application to find information on the zoning map. And again, it's really nice to be able to toggle between existing and proposed. Also, if you zoom in close enough on the map to parcel specific and right-click on the parcel, it will bring up links to information about zoning districts in the code so you can find out more about the zoning district that is proposed in the code and also links for information in the code. Listing the districts, once you go to the map and know what district you're in, you're in one of the districts I'm showing on the next two slides. We have a lot of mixed-use zoning districts that are both downtown-specific, mixed-use for nodes and corridors, residential office mix, large format, commercial, industrial. And then we get into our neighborhood zoning districts. And again, there are neighborhood-specific zoning districts that would be most like our existing R1 zoning districts in the city. Those are all those N districts in this code. And then you get into some of the mixed-use neighborhoods, which are supposed to be the transitions from the commercial corridors back into the predominantly low-density residential districts in the code. This draft also includes a revision to the floodplain, floodway. We have new updated flood hazard maps available from federal government. Those are reflected on the zoning map, the draft zoning map. Rather than having two flood districts, a floodplain and floodway, this code proposes it's just designated as a flood hazard district. And the applicant, if they're under that zoning, would need to contact our Permit Development Center floodplain administrators to discuss their exact location in floodplain or floodway, and then to discuss what the requirements are for development in that situation as far as mitigating flood risk. We also have two new public districts in this code. The P1 district is for the parks and recreation uses. Currently, all of our parks are basically zoned, whatever the surrounding neighborhood is zoned. It has caused a lot of issues with signage in particular for parks and just in general uses. And so being in residential zoning districts, those have tighter sign requirements than you would typically find for a park and recreation use. So we feel that having the parks zoning district is important. The other one is the P2 district, which covers churches, schools, and institutions. And again, there's a little bit more latitude on signage for those types of uses than currently is allowed in the R1 districts that most of those are located in. There's also a legacy planned unit development district, so anything that is zoned planned unit development today, prior to the effective date of any new ordinance, will remain zoned planned unit development under this code. If they want to amend that PUD in the future, the developer wants to amend it, they would have to come to the Plan and Zoning Commission and the Council to get that amended, just as they would today. But we are not rezoning after the effective date of the code any new property to planned unit development. But we are respecting existing planned unit developments and calling those legacy districts under this code. They would be able to continue to build out their planned unit development just as it was originally approved. Once you know the district specific that you're in, the next step is to confirm whether or not the use that you're proposing is allowed in the zoning district, just like you would with this code today. With our code today, everything is listed narratively in the code for uses, and the code has a pyramid approach to it. So commercial districts also allow residential uses, but to get to those list of uses, you have to flip your way all the way back through the code to various districts. So commercial district will say, these 20 uses are allowed, and see also R4 district. You go to the R4 district, 20 uses listed or whatever, it'll say, see also R3, R2, R1. Basically, everything goes back to R180. So to get a true comprehensive list of uses, you have to work going through our existing code. It's very cumbersome. Under this, everything's been put in charts. Across the top of the charts are the districts. Down the left-hand column of the tables are the uses. So you can quickly find a use and what districts it's allowed in. If the district you're in does not allow the use that you're looking for, you can quickly find what zoning district you need that will allow that use just by staying in the same table. So we think that's a definite improvement in communication of information. Yes, Greg?
So in that situation, if you feel you want to put a use in a district that's not currently allowed, would that be in 134 or 135 in terms of the alternatives or the type 1, type 2?
The procedure section of 134 would govern the uses and zoning.
Zoning, okay, got it.
So you would, just like today, apply for a rezoning, just like today. If you didn't get your rezoning approved, you'd have the option of getting a use variance. All of that is still the same under this type of a code.
And it's a Board of Adjustment?
It's all governed by 134. I'm sorry?
It's a Board of Adjustment?
Use variance is Board of Adjustment, yes. But again, just like today, it's Board of Adjustment review for a use variance. So with that, we think that the, once you know, say your use is allowed, your zoning's correct, then you need to find out what building types are allowed in each zoning district or the applicable zoning district. And there are certain building types allowed in each zoning district. Some districts, some building types are allowed in multiple districts. There's a chart in there, again, that has the districts across the top, building types down the left-hand column, and you can see which building types are allowed for the uses. One component of this table, there are some symbols in it that reference whether or not there's occupied space or retail or mixed-use component to that building type that's required. Sometimes that's required on what we call a primary street. And online on planDSM.org, we have the primary streets map draft posted. There's the larger map of the entire city, and then there's an inset on that map of the downtown area, which I zoomed in in this photo. So again, this would be where typically buildings at front on these blue lines would be buildings you'd want the storefront, commercial building type on. That doesn't necessarily mean that there always has to be commercial in those or retail in those. We've expanded what uses can go on the ground floor on those frontages. And there is relief in chapter 135 for the building types that they can see, that a developer could seek either a type 1 or type 2 design alternative through staff or P&amp;Z to waive building type requirements, for example. Once from that table, you know what building types are allowed, you can go back in the code and look at the four-page spread for each building type to get more information. The four-page spread starts always with character examples of that building type, and then the later pages, second, third pages are typically the tables that show where the building needs to be on the site, how tall it can be, things that traditionally have been zoning that are now planning and design regulations in this code. In addition, the last page of all of those is generally a notes page that might have additional requirements on it. If you go to the house types A, B, C, and D in this code, that fourth page of those building types is where you'll see the requirements that say, single-family detached dwellings and duplex, or, single-family detached dwellings have to be, for a ranch house, 1,400 square feet minimum; story and a half, 1,600 square feet minimum; two-story, 1,800 square feet minimum. That section also states, please go look at the procedure section of this code because you can seek type 1 or type 2 design administrative, I'm sorry, type 1 or type 2 design alternatives to that requirement, for example. There's a general provision back in the procedure section that says, staff can vary up to 30% of that square footage requirement. So the 1,400-square-foot ranch, staff has the ability to go down to at least 980 square feet in this code through a type 1 design alternative. If someone wants to go more than 30% relief to that, they would have to come to the Plan and Zoning Commission as a type 2 design alternative under this code. Now, how would that get applied? In my opinion, it'd be, we'd have to look very closely at making variations to that out in greenfield development areas. Certainly, we would not want an entire development to come in at less than the minimums that are prescribed. We would be looking for a mix. We also believe there'd be greater flexibility to that square footage requirement on infill lots and closer in to the city center. A lot of that is based on, again, if you go back to Plan DSM, we talked about how periphery development, greenfield development needed to be reviewed based on a return on investment analysis because the costs of extending streets, utilities, police, fire, library, out to periphery areas is extensive. And we know we have to get a level of return on development to pay for those services over time. On the closer-in properties, we already have services in place, utilities, streets, et cetera. We're trying to, the code or the comp plan, put an emphasis on infill development, and that's what this code is trying to reinforce.
Mike?
Yes?
Can there be a conversation, or has already been a conversation about, if it's about increased property value to pay for services, that sometimes smaller, higher quality has an equal property value to bigger, less quality? I mean, has that conversation been had or not had, or where is it?
Yeah, I mean, it's been held extensively in the last two days, I can tell you. I had two meetings yesterday with the development community and one public meeting last night. Lot of discussion continuing on that. Part of that is the other two requirements that are in those house-type building types is that we're asking for a garage, a minimum 12-by-24 garage, and we're asking for a basement. And those are amenities that, what we've found is that when, for example, a property does not have a garage, those properties are not appreciating at the same rate as the homes that do have those garages. And it's not really a parking issue, hiding parking issue. It's an amenity issue, and it's also a storage issue on properties. We spend a lot of money as a city on property nuisances, on cleanups, and across the city, it detracts from the appearance of neighborhoods when items are left outside, when they don't have proper storage. And so the garage requirement is really an opportunity to try and address proper storage on a property for growing needs. The basement requirement that is proposed is really an attempt to try and address long-term, it addresses obviously a safety question of storm protection, which we're fairly used to in Iowa. There's other options to that. There's storm rooms and things, and not every building has a storm room. But traditionally, that has been the method of storm protection. What we were looking at as staff was the idea that, right now, to do slab construction for a home, you're basically going down four feet to frost up with a foundation wall around the slab anyway. By going down an additional approximately four feet, the slab that's at grade becomes the basement floor. So there's additional excavation, additional foundation wall depth, and then there's floor joists that span the foundation walls. We felt like that's a fairly, while it is a cost increase, it's also a fairly incremental cost increase that allows long-term valuation, potential growth on that property, that you would be more likely to see a basement being finished off at a later time for more habitable space, which could increase over time the valuation of the property. And the likelihood of finishing off an existing basement might be greater than actually going and doing an addition at a later time that has a foundation to a property. That was the perspective that we had on it. From the zoning code, under the procedure section, again, I'm sorry, under the planning and design code, chapter 135, staff can administratively waive a basement if there are water table issues or if there is an issue with sewer, being able to service that lowest issues, or if there is an issue with sewer, being able to service that lowest floor elevation in the house. And those are two examples that you, as the planning commission, have granted, for example, for Home Inc. on a couple of properties in, in, uh, north of, um, north of the Des Moines River. And so, there were a couple instances there where Pam Carmichael, for example, was here asking, she said there were water table issues and, or sewer issues with those properties. And those were granted by the planning commission. We're proposing that staff could grant that administratively if they demonstrated that for our engineering department. If somebody just wanted to waive entirely putting in a basement and there were no, no physical constraints to it, it would require a type 2 Plan and Zoning Commission approval under this, under this Chapter 135 draft. Obviously, there's been some discussion about, should there be the administrative ability to reduce a portion of the square footage of the basement instead of it being a full footprint? And those are things that will be discussed, I think, as these hearings and everything progress. Secondly, on the garages, just not doing a garage under this code requires a type 2 relief from the Plan and Zoning Commission. So, that's, I, I think, early on, a lot of people read the first part about the square footages. A lot of people didn't make it all the way back to the relief parts of the code. And so, I wanted to be very clear that there are provisions drafted in this existing public hearing draft that tried to address, how do we reasonably apply that, 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 that minimum square footage range? So, after you've gone through the building requirements, site, location, height, setbacks, those types of things, we go into the design requirements of Chapter 135, which are like building materials. Some design requirements for specific uses are also in this section of the chapter, of the, Chapter 135 as well. Roof materials, window design, et cetera. Parking is in the design chapter. Right now, you have to go to the Board of Adjustment unless you're in an NPC zoning district, or unless you're in the downtown, which waives any required parking. This would put it all in administrative review. And basically, these parking standards across the board represent about a 30% reduction from our existing parking ratios. Not every use, but kind of across the board. For comparison, as I said, that neighborhood pedestrian commercial zoning district, which has been in effect for 20, 21 years, I guess.
18 years.
That represents a 40% reduction. So, we're, we're trying to move all of our parking stands, or standards closer to that NPC zoning district that we have today. This is also not just because there's changes in driving habits or that, or, or foreseeing changes in driving habits. It really has to do with a stormwater management goal and sustainability goals of the comp plan. So, we know we need to reduce the impervious surface area. We have large parking lots that are unused that are, the water's just running off because it's, it's an impervious area. So, this is the first step in trying to reduce some of our stormwater impacts and the treatment of stormwater that we're required to do before we send that water downstream, just as we're concerned and hope that communities above us, upstream from us, are taking these types of considerations. Then, the landscape regulations are now in this, Chapter 135. These are enhancement from our existing landscape standards. Again, the more green space we can, can, can get onsite, the more water we can get to absorb onsite to prevent runoff, the better. This also addresses heat island effect by having plantings and park, increased plantings in parking lots, and again, implements the sustainability goals of the Plan DSM. Signs?
Mike?
Yes?
Could you, could you describe where sidewalks, new sidewalks, fall into this?
Sidewalks are under the landscape and streetscape section of the code as well as onsite. There's some of it in the parking section, you know, if it's, if it's within the parking lot itself. But the perimeter streets, perimeter sidewalks are addressed by the landscape section, streetscape section of the code.
Are there any new regulations other than those that are existing in this new plan?
Yeah, they're enhanced on, on our streetscape. So, we are trying to get more street trees planted with this code in all districts, and so you'll see requirements like that in, in the landscape standards. Signs. So, everything I've been talking about, design-wise, has been 135. You need to go back to 134 to find the information about signs. And one of the reasons we left this there was because the Board of Adjustment has the most experience with dealing with the sign issues as far as sign content, not regulating content, but regulating, uh, sign types rather than content. If you've gone through our existing code today, our sign code is the, is the worst mess in the entire ordinance. It is so difficult to find information in that code. I think this is a significant improvement in this draft of, of information. Again, zoning districts are across the top, sign types are on the left-hand column of the, of the chart, and then the sizes are in the table. It's much, much easier to find the information. We've simplified the, the sign types. We have a lot of categories today in the code that, the only way you know what sign type it is, is to look and read what's on the sign. So, we're, a code today has issues with content. We need to fix that, and, and this ordinance is doing that.
So, will relief or modification of signs lie with planning and zoning, or would that still require Board of Adjustment?
Board of Adjustment would, would handle the sign relief. So, when you go back to Chapter 134 of the code, the procedure section, you will still see zoning exceptions and variances in, in that chapter. Those apply to signs. There's also the conditional uses in there. There's also a procedure for rezoning of, of property, changing the district. It governs the items that are in 134, the zoning chapter. Chapter 135 procedures govern anything that's listed in Chapter 135 of the code. There isn't, previously, there was overlap. There was reference in 135 back to procedures in 134, and it confused people, so we've, we've separated that out. Each chapter has its own procedure section that applies to that chapter. So, we tried to, tried to clarify. Yes?
Mike, when a, a site plan appears before the October, before it goes to the council, would they qualify under the old, for example, for signs under the old code, or how are you going to transition?
So, we, our intent is to process building permit applications and PUD rezonings, and quite honestly, zonings to other districts, recognizing that unless it's a planned unit development, it will go away when the new map gets adopted. So, we're continuing to process applications under our existing code till the new code is effective, and then there will be a time after the new code is adopted where we're still continuing to finish up processing applications that were filed prior to the new code's effective date. So, we're going to have a time where there's kind of dual, dual things happening, and it could be confusing. We'll do our best to keep you up to speed as to why you're reviewing it in this instance and not in another, but that's just a fact of trying to write a new code. This is the first comprehensive rewrite since 1965. If it was easy, it would have been done before now. There was angst in 1965 when a zoning ordinance was adopted, and that code was never perfect. It's still not perfect today. The number of complaints I get about our existing code is substantially greater than the complaints I've heard about this draft, and we've heard complaints about this draft, but there's, it's a fraction compared to what I've heard about the existing code over my career. I believe that if we are going to wait for perfect in a code, we will never get there. We need to adopt the code. I, I cannot tell you right now, I've got staff oftentimes writing three different staff reports for the exact same project because it has to go to three different boards or commissions to get approval. And the prime example I'll give you was, you reviewed the site plan, actually, for it. There was a multifamily development for Mercy Campus on the north edge of Des Moines. It's Zone C2 today, which is a highway-oriented commercial. It's not a downtown zoning district. It's within our downtown overlay, though. The C2 zoning says, any building on that property should be 25 feet back from the lot line. The overlay district says, put the building out at the street. So, the developer had to go to the Board of Adjustment, get a variance with staff support to the 25-foot setback requirement to comply with the overlay district that we wanted them to comply with. They did that. It took them 30 days in process to do so. Then, after they got that relief, they submitted a site plan, which came before the planning commission for multifamily site plan review and downtown overlay district review. Different guidelines, we evaluated them all. In it, in the end, they built a building that contained a use that was allowed where we wanted it. It looked like we wanted it to, and there was no neighborhood opposition. And that project took almost 90 days in process because they also went to the Urban Design Review Board because they asked for financial assistance on the project. Under this code, we're eliminating the conflicts that exist after making 300-plus amendments to the existing zoning ordinance in the last 50-some years. And so, we've eliminated a lot of those conflicts, and we've also simplified the review processes. Now, that example of that project, they wouldn't have had to go onto the Board of Adjustment, and they wouldn't have come to the Planning Commission for a multifamily site plan unless they needed a type 2 design alternative. It could have been handled entirely administratively by staff, and we could have cut the process time at least in half for that project. And that's really the overall goal. We've, we've prescribed standards in the code to be met. That was a trade-off that we made with neighborhoods. We said we need to raise the bar on development, design, minimum standards, and in exchange, we're willing to let things go through administrative processes and not have a public hearing every time to approve those uses. So, if you look at our goals of affordable housing in the community, it's easy to say the square footages requirements, the garage requirements, the basement requirements are harmful to affordable housing. To an extent, they do increase cost, but on the flip side, that negates all of the other benefits of this code for affordable housing. This code addresses accessory dwelling units in, in certain districts, which are not currently permitted under our code. It allows the reintroduction of missing middle housing back into some of our residential districts that, for example, in our existing code, duplexes have been prohibited in any R1 zoning district since 1995, I believe. And this code says, there are districts where duplexes should be allowed to go back into areas that have been predominantly single-family residential for a long time. So, we are trying to address affordability through a variety of types, as well as, as I said, shortening the process for multifamily review. The map implements the comp plan, land use map, which encouraged density at nodes and on transit corridors. The zoning map implements that. It puts districts there and says, yes, it's okay to put multifamily on these corridors and in these nodes. So, we believe there's a lot of different prongs to affordability that are addressed, and Des Moines has, again, our comp plan said, we're urban, right? We're not suburban, we're urban. That's our strength. We need to do things to encourage urbanity in Des Moines, urban design, urban density, and that's what we're trying to do with this code. So, processes, again, there's processes in, in the zoning, Chapter 134, and the design chapter in 135. So, key changes made, I covered some of them in my presentation earlier, but just key changes since the last time we released a draft. We used to have type 1 exceptions and type 2 exceptions to design standards in the code. We now call those design alternatives, and those try to eliminate the confusion between designing, or variances and exceptions from zoning and design alternatives to design chapter. Non-conforming design, we changed it to pre-existing, so there's existing houses. We are not going to say that something becomes a non-conforming use because it doesn't comply with the design standards that we're adopting in this code. Use is in 134. Somebody calls us and wants a rebuild letter and says, is my use conforming or non-conforming? It will be entirely based on use, not on the design of the building. Just like today, when somebody calls in, we don't say, oh, well, it was built under the building code in 1962. We have a new building code today, therefore, that's a, that's now a non-conforming use. But we don't do that. We don't do that with stormwater regulations today. Those have changed over time. So, again, we've made it clear that, that design is not going to, to cause any kind of non-conforming use problems. The administrative relief, I'm sorry, the minimum square footages were added, as I said. The administrative relief in the Chapter 135 was increased from 15% for staff to 30%. That's to the numerical requirements of the, of the design chapter. Again, we doubled that. For comparison, today, under our existing zoning ordinance, there is an administrative exception of 15%, but we also require an applicant that wants it, or a property owner, to get the signatures of every property owner to consent to that relief under our existing code. The time to do that is probably two weeks in some instances for them to get all those signatures. They, they don't even go that path. They just go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for an exception today or a variance. Under this code, we have the ability to grant up to 30% administratively, and it doesn't require signatures or that, but that, that's, that's how the code is drafted. So, we're kind of in between the administrative process today and the 50% relief that the Board of Adjustment grants as an exception today. It's just 30% by staff in the future. And if they want more than that, it's Planning and Zoning Commission, not, not Board of Adjustment. There was a one-and-a-half-story requirement previously in the code for housing. That's been reduced to one in all districts except for the N4 district, which is the core of Beaverdale, which the character of that neighborhood is, in that area is, the story-and-a-half construction. It has the half-story above it that's finished off on most houses in that neighborhood area. We did make some changes to the house type A in the N2 zoning district. So, if you look at most of our greenfield areas on the periphery of Des Moines on the map, they're either zoned planned unit development on the map or N2 on the map. That's your most contemporary zoning district, and house type A is the most contemporary house type. It's the most common traditional subdivision, suburban, uh, single-family house style. We increased the percentage of the building facade that could be a garage in that, in that section, and we also, our intent is to correct, there, there is an error in the draft, to allow garages to project in front of the front facade of the house. It says recessed now, and it should have said project, but we did change it to allow projection of up to eight feet. Again, that, that's subject to relief in Chapter 135, but the eight feet was viewed as it's one-third of the standard garage stall depth that's prescribed in the code. And again, we were trying to address not having, in all instances, the entire garage out in front of the house. We would like to have some of that setback. So, those changes were, were specifically to address a desire for three-car garages and to have some projection in front of the house. We also asked that the third-car garage be recessed slightly behind the, the other two garage doors in this, which is fairly typical in, in a lot of the new construction that's happening. The full basement requirement applies for single-family detached and duplexes. The garage requirement, minimum 12-by-24, again, applies to single-family detached and duplexes. That 12-by-24, we looked at Merle Hay neighborhood, for example, post-World War II construction. Garages are mostly 10-by-20 in that area. We were trying to provide some additional area in the garages for longer vehicles as well as storage. That's where we came up with 12-by-24. I talked about the garage door. We added flexibility for We added flexibility for variation in roof types for single-family residential and for window types for single-family residential, and all buildings, actually. Class A and Class B bike parking. We did get concerns about Class A bike parking in the comment period on the last draft. That was because of, Class A is interior to the building of a multifamily building, so they have to have a storage locker, some sort of basement storage area or a room within the multifamily building to store bikes inside for their residents under the old draft. That has been eliminated from this draft. The only bike parking that is in this draft is the Class B bike parking, which is the exterior bike racks that we currently don't require. But it is something that they can do to get tax abatement. We are proposing to require the exterior bike racks as part of this draft. It's still an option to do the interior ones if they want to, and it could be added back to the code at a later time as well. There's nothing preventing future changes to this code.
Excuse me, Mike.
Yeah.
Do some of these things fall under, like, federal requirements?
I'm sorry, could you speak in the microphone?
Yes. For example, the bike racks, does some of your decision-making on the code fall into federal requirements or any other type requirements?
You mean as far as accessibility or location of the bike racks? Yeah. I mean, that's addressed by the bike parking standards. When we do our site plan review, it can't block an accessible route or, sorry, we have to make sure there's a clear distance between the bike parking and the building and that, just like we do today. We did revise the materials chart. Some additional flexibility was granted, for example, for a single-family residential detached. That vinyl siding was added. Previously, it was cement board in the previous draft. So, there was changes there as an example. We have the occupied space requirement on those commercial buildings and parking structures on those primary streets. The occupied space requirement says that the first 30 feet of depth needs to be some sort of occupied space, where that's office, retail, building space. And currently, it says on all levels. We had a lot of debate on that. The ultimate change that council requested was that it be a Type 2 review to vary from that. Again, from our perspective, I think probably the first two to three stories is the most important, that street level. But if you think about a building like the Davis Brown Tower downtown, it has occupied space at the ground level, and the midsection of the building has the parking, and then the office is up above that. That's a fine example of an appropriate design. So, this is one section we may need to have clearly some additional discussion about, in my opinion. And then the wireless telecommunication regulations that the zoning and Board of Adjustment would be dealing with, not you. But this really just brings us into compliance with state and federal laws, which have changed significantly in the last three years on these regulations. We actually drafted this, and there were almost some more changes during the legislative session this year that we would have had to rewrite the whole thing again. So, we're hoping that we should be good for the time being to adopt this as part of our code and hopefully not have to amend it again. Cemeteries and scattering grounds are in this code. Scattering grounds are becoming more popular. The issue is that if there's any kind of compensation for the scattering of the ashes, it becomes a cemetery. So, we need to have review of where those are where those are being permitted under this code. Because otherwise, under the state code, we have a responsibility to preserve those areas in the future. That could become a detriment to future development in areas as well. So, we need to have those defined, and use needs to be approved under the code. Home occupation's been updated. Part of the main thing was implementing the changes that were discussed about the daycare that had been previously discussed by council. Short-term rental regulations are added to this code. It's a conditional use to have short-term rentals. So, platforms like Airbnb, other things, that's where these regulations are at in the code. You'll read through it. You'll see there's a minimum number of days of occupancy by the owner of the house, minimum or maximum number of days it can be rented out. We got a lot of comments about the short-term rental as part of the last draft. And we did a lot of research into what other cities, San Francisco, New York, are doing to regulate this. Initially, kind of the Wild, Wild West was fine with everybody. And as they found out, it's had a detrimental impact on housing values and affordability in communities. It's taking affordable housing units off the market because people are finding they can make more money renting it out nightly than they can renting it out monthly or long-term leases. And we actually had comments from citizens who had tried to rent a house, and it'd been taken off the market as a rental, an affordable rental, because it had become Airbnb all the time. So, we tried to address that in this code. The use tables have been updated. Again, that overlap in processes between the two chapters has been eliminated. And then electronic billboards have been updated. Previously, the previous draft said no more electronic billboards, no more billboards, period. Existing ones are all nonconforming. This draft opens that up, back up, a little bit. It basically says that new billboards, digital billboards, and replacement of static or conversion of static billboards to digital display can only happen along major commercial corridors, which I'll show the map of that in a second. But then we also revised the operational standards for those billboards, those electronic billboards, to reduce the lighting levels that are allowed. We increased the setback from residential that's required for new ones. We also made all billboards have to have 1,000-foot separation. Right now, in code, some could have 500, some could have 1,000. Everything is 1,000, simplified the code. It's, previously, you read all these exclusions. And based on the exclusions, whatever was left in the code was where you could have them. Kind of a hard way to read through a code. This one says this is where they're allowed, and it identifies them specifically. So, map, these are the red corridors where is proposed to allow future conversions of static billboards to digital display or new digital display. And those are the corridors. That, other than the schedule, which is on planDSM.org above, you don't need to copy down all these dates. It's this.
You gave it to us.
Yeah. We gave it to you, and the schedule is on the Plan DSM website for the public. Again, we are going to break for, get a sandwich, come back and take your questions tonight. And then we'll also have another workshop, two weeks from now, with the Commission to give you a chance to go back and look through this, come back with more questions, ask for information. And then we hopefully will have a public hearing with this Commission on July 18th. We're not going to ask you to make a decision that night. We're going to let you also have a second hearing on the first meeting in August. And then, if you deem appropriate, you can make a recommendation that night. If everything goes well, we're talking mid-October. That'd be the absolute earliest this could be effective. We expect it probably to have a deferred implementation date potentially because this is just reflecting 10 days to publish the ordinance, which is, we're probably going to need more time than that. But we definitely want to have it done. And the schedule is what we've come up with. So, with that, if you want to take a quick break and grab your box sandwich, and then we can come back and start answering questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike, I have a quick question. Could you kind of remind us of our role here? In particular, if there are sections that we're unhappy with, are we, do we have the ability to suggest changes or are we voting up-down kind of thing?
No, you are clearly, as the recommending body to the plan and zoning, or to the council under state code, have the ability to make motions for amendments to the ordinance that ultimately gets forwarded on to them. We have a steering committee that we're also meeting with who's going to, you know, vet some of the changes that might be proposed by staff based on the input we've received. I would expect that at the public hearing, we would list out those kind of changes that we have run through the steering committee for your consideration. And then clearly you'd have the opportunity as well to suggest changes to that, just like you do on any motion or any consideration that you do. You can agree with the staff recommendation, or you can modify it, or vote as a group to change another section. So certainly is that opportunity available to you.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Mike?
Are there questions about the square footage, basements, garage? That got a lot of discussion in the last two meetings that I've been at. I just wanted to, I think I was clear in describing where staff came from on it. I think I was clear that there is relief available to the code. And at least in the first two meetings, I'm not certain that that was exactly well-known by the people in attendance. So I just wanted to make sure the commission is aware of that and where those provisions are in the ordinance.
If you want opinions, I have two. One, I've never understood basements. We Americans just collect junk.
Could you, Mike, could you speak in the?
We Americans collect junk, so I've never understood basements. And I just don't get that. On the garage end, rather than stipulating a specific size, if somebody wanted, that's 288 square feet, 12 by 24. If that's the goal, why wouldn't we say 288 square feet? It might be 12 by 24, it might be 11 by whatever, it might be... Who, I see in this ordinance so many very defined items. How much wiggle room do you have as staff to say, you're meeting the intent, that's okay?
Well, those specific wiggle room provisions are in the procedures section of Chapter 135, Article 9, I believe it is. And so it lists out items that we can vary and what, to what degree. There are also some provisions that are listed with the specific requirement in the code. So it's either specifically where the requirement is in the code, or it might say that we can vary it, or it falls under one of the general standards in the procedures section. As far as your comment about the garages, again, we base that primarily off of aerial photography, looking at post-World War II construction, which are predominantly single-stall garages. And the predominant measurement was about 10 by 20 on those garages.
Yeah, I support the garages. I'm just saying, you specifically say 12 by 24.
It was, it was based off the dimensions of what we were seeing and boosting that slightly for longer vehicles and additional storage capacity. So looked at, quite honestly, standard kits for garages, for menards, things like that, as, you know, what was available out there. And so that was where we came from. If it's a square footage requirement, that's ultimately whatever the planning commission recommends and the council adopts, quite honestly.
Are we open for questions?
Mm-hmm.
The PUD system, I think, has been successful because it takes tracks of ground and allows there to be dialogue between the neighborhoods and the developer. And quite often, staff has encouraged PUDs in the past to say...
Excuse me, Mike, they're having a hard time.
Quite often in the past, staff has encouraged developers to go the PUD route because it engages the neighborhood and allows the neighborhood to say, if you do X, Y, and Z, we could support this project. Do you anticipate challenges that you prescriptively can't solve without having that PUD type of a mechanism?
So the question is, do we expect there to be difficulties not having a planned unit development process available, that there can't be a dialogue on the, on the design, you know, deliberation legislatively? I think it's addressed by this code. I don't... Ultimately, two things. The main reason for the planned unit development is because our code has been so out of date, one, that it was needed to provide an end run around a very outdated, obsolete zoning ordinance. Secondly, I think the planned unit development process has increased quality. It's kind of set the bar for what this code is establishing. And I think, third, the, in the past, our comprehensive plan, future land use map, was not as much of a guidance document on where to put uses. I would argue that the 2020 plan that was adopted shortly before I started with the city and was in effect until three years ago, while did a great job of addressing community character and defining what that character was and architectural styles, and introduced the idea of traffic calming and, and very, very good planning goals, the link between predictability of future land use and transportation, and the predictability of what use and zoning we're going to go on the property was minimal in that, in that map. It was more of an existing conditions map than a future land use map. And it set almost every project up for a rezoning and a debate on the zoning of the property, which, in many circumstances, created some very lengthy and deliberative processes. Not bad necessarily, but also some very good projects went through some extraordinary pain to get implemented. And the new comp plan and new land use map does a better job of linking transportation and land use, and does a better job of saying, these are the appropriate locations where we are willing to accept uses because they're linked to transit, because they're, we want more mixed use, all of those things. The concept was that there would be a new zoning code that was covering the design chapter and raising the bar on the design to be comparable with what we were effectively getting through planned unit developments and site plan reviews by planning commission. So I think that the PUD worked really well because of the circumstances. A lot of those circumstances have changed with the new comp plan and this idea of raising the bar for all development, not just those developments that went through planned unit developments. Because by right development has been allowed to pretty much, unless it's getting tax abatement, it hasn't had much of a standard for any kind of design today. And what we're saying is, all projects should have design to them in this new code. Under this new code, the Type 2 review process is essentially the PUD process. I want to be very clear, they're not parallel tracks. Under the code, you would go through a Type 1 administrative review, and if we identify that there's things that staff can't vary because it goes beyond the standard, or the developer doesn't want to comply with our code or our comments on that, then the project has the opportunity to be kicked into the Type 2 review portion of the, of the process. So it's very similar today to a planned unit development, both in time and in how, how that flows today. When you come in and you submit, we give you comments, we talk about it, then we schedule your hearing, you hold the hearing, then you go to council for the PUD, and council implements it. Under this, theoretically, it's stopping at planning commission. It would only go to council if it was appealed. So we've kind of, the Type 2 process is not intended to be an end run. You can't just automatically ignore the administrative process and just submit for Type 2 review by planning commission under this code. That's not how it's proposed. The idea is that that fast-track administrative process, if there's compliance, we get it done, and it's the shortest process available. If, if there's issues or relief in the design that we can't grant, and it goes into that little bit longer process, additional, excuse me, additional process of plan and zoning commission approval. So I think the comparable to a PUD is our Type 2 review process in this, in this code, where the planning commission gets to review it.
I have one further question, if I may, regarding billboards. Have we done an evaluation of the property taxes generated by billboards? Why, why would we encourage electronic or any kind of a billboard, other than taxes? And they're huge moneymakers for the owners of the billboards, but I, I don't know what kind of property taxes we collect on billboards.
There are valuations on those. Clearly, the valuation of the property isn't probably as tied to the number of messages they can convey, because the mess, number of messages on a digital billboard is every eight seconds. Obviously, the value of that is substantial. The price of actually, the cost of those billboards is declining with technology. So they were, when they first came out, about a million dollars a billboard. They're now down to about, I was told, 200,000.
Commercial buildings are more, more or less valued at the income that's generated.
Yeah.
If you go and protest your taxes...
The zoning code won't address how that gets assessed. That's another discussion that we can have. But, you know, I think the reality is, there is, we got a lot of comments from people, businesses that utilize billboards for advertising, that, and, and quite honestly, you know, in the past, our council's been split on billboards. Every time we've gone back and looked at billboards, and I would expect there still exists split on the council on billboards. It's been that way ever since I've been here for 18 years, and I don't expect that that's changed. So what we try to do, every time that we've amended the billboard regulations in the city, we have tightened them up. There's just been incremental tightening. We've probably, I know we've revisited billboards four times in my 18 years. About every three years, we talk about billboards as a city and tighten up the regulations on them. And in every instance, there's been a debate about an all-out ban on them. Get rid of them and start amortizing, buy them out, and take down all the existing ones. And in every one of those instances, there's never been the ability to do an all-out ban, and there's never been a political will to, well, an economic will to buy out billboards. Static ones, you could, you could probably amortize. Other cities have done that. The digital ones are very costly to buy out. As soon as we opened the door and allowed digital billboards in Des Moines several years ago, the ability to amortize that cost went up substantially because of that value of a message changing every eight seconds is significant revenue. And to buy out that or compensate for that lost revenue would be substantial. And to buy out that or compensate for that lost revenue would be substantial. So, under this code, uh, right now, um, you can only do the conversion of a static billboard. What we have provided in this draft is the ability to have some new billboards with the hope that maybe some of the existing digital billboards that, on corridors that are saturated, might be relocated, spread out a little bit more to other corridors. Um, regardless of whether you do a conversion or construct a new one, you have to use conversion credits and earn credits. So, and we increased how many of those credits had to be used, doubled them. So, um, theoretically, more billboards will be coming down than currently under the code to put up a new digital billboard in Des Moines. So we should be seeing a net reduction, a greater net reduction in the number of billboards in the city, um, in exchange for that latitude of putting up, uh, new digital, new digital billboards in, on a few corridors.
Thank you.
Sure. You asked about our thoughts on the minimum, um, sizes, and you know I'm skeptical of, of minimum house sizes. And I guess I had a couple of questions. First of all, you, I mean, I, I get what you're saying about if, if we're going to be building out services, we need to, uh, get that, um, back in, in taxes. Is, are, are the minimums, minimum house sizes, uh, only in the N1 and 2 districts?
It's the house type. So if you go to house type A, B, C, or D, which are the single-family detached building types-
H-type minimum.
That's where, so regardless of zoning district, whenever that house type is used, that's where that square footage comes in. And some have asked, where did we come up with fourteen, sixteen, eighteen? That was the most recent, uh, basically rezoning that council approved for square footages. And I will say, it's not new in Des Moines. Every planned unit development and every R1 rezoning that I can think of, in my eighteen years of the city, has had a zoning condition on it stating a minimum square footage was required. And that's gone from, you know, eleven hundred, twelve hundred square feet to, for a ranch, to the fourteen hundred in this one. But I, I could point to repeated, every R1 rezoning and certainly every PUD has a minimum square footage for different house sizes in it specified.
Thanks. And could you just, you said that there was a lot of just public discussion about those. Could you just say a little bit about what were people's concerns?
Sure. So, um, you know, there's the affordability question about it, that we're forcing, uh, you know, with the release of the, um, of the housing study that just came out this week, um, the downtown housing study in particular, and, um, the, the designate, or that report basically said, where it's like fifty-eight thousand units they're anticipated to be needed to accommodate the growth of, uh, Des Moines from an affordable housing standpoint going forward. Des Moines metro, not just Des Moines. And so, um, clearly that came out, and, and there's a lot of sensitivity to housing cost, and every additional regulation adds cost to that. We're already subsidizing through Polk Housing, Housing Trust Fund, Affordable Housing, Habitat Home, Inc., our building products. It does affect that. I, I'm not questioning that. What, uh, we also heard was that, um, uh, there are home builders that are wanting to start building smaller homes in, in Des Moines and in the metro, and that that's a trend that they're seeing nationwide, that, that, that cities are going to, or going to be going to in the future, is smaller home sizes. Um, and, uh, we also discussed yesterday, the average sale price of a house in Des Moines proper is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And the target range that the affordable, the housing survey is saying is need to be hit is a hundred and seventy-five thousand to be affordable. So right now, Des Moines itself proper has the largest percentage of affordable housing, affordable valued housing in the entire metro, at a hundred and thirty-three thousand, and substantially below what the thing, the issue is it's occupied housing. So it doesn't really do anything to address the gap going forward, or the need for more additional, um, affordable housing. My comments to, or responses to that have just been, those are valid points, and that needs to be debated and discussed. But to just focus again on the single-family square footages as, or that single-family residential detached is the only component of the affordable housing solution is, is not, in my opinion, accurate. And I think that our zoning code tries to address more components of that affordable housing effort. So when you talk about our process is being improved, to our land use map saying where multifamily housing is appropriate, our zoning map putting that into effect, regulatory, they come in with a design that complies with the standards at a location where it's allowed, it should be permitted. It's on a transit route, we should, it should go through the system. So it, we've gotten rid of the PNZ site plan review of multifamily. It would just theoretically could be an administrative review on those. I think that's a benefit. I think that helps address affordable housing, time and process, reducing that, save money. Um, I also think that the accessory dwelling units I mentioned that have been introduced in this draft help that. Um, again, an accessory dwelling unit, if you have a principal structure on the property that's owner-occupied, you can have an accessory dwelling unit of up to fifty percent of the square footage of the primary structure as an accessory dwelling unit. In certain districts, not all districts, maybe in the future, the code's amended and it gets expanded to all districts. That's what a lot of cities are doing right now. We felt like, we haven't had it forever, so maybe we should tiptoe into it, make sure everybody's good. Um, but the thought is that, I mean, maybe from an affordable housing standpoint, that accessory dwelling unit could be an income stream for the, for the family that's living in that home. And that's not just a, a low-income family, that's any family. Maybe that, that accessory dwelling unit is helping pay a portion of the mortgage on the, on that homeowner's property. Um, so it's an in, a potential income stream from that perspective. It could be in the basement. It doesn't have to be in a detached structure, above a garage or anything like that. It could be in the basement of the dwelling. So when we ask for basements in these, if there's the opportunity in the same district to allow an accessory dwelling unit, maybe that accessory dwelling unit could be finished off in a portion of the basement we're requiring. And again, it's an income stream for a potential, um, owner. Um, so the multifamily, the accessory dwelling units, the missing middle component that's in this code, again, I, I can't speak to in nineteen ninety-five, I'm guessing there were some really bad duplexes designed in the late nineties, and it became a problem. And I'm guessing they didn't have garages, and I'm guessing they didn't have very much storage. And there was a concern about it, and it, they were written out of the residential zoning districts. And our comp plan says we have to address the missing middle housing and reintroduce that housing into neighborhoods. People want to be able to stay in their same neighborhood but move into a smaller house, move into a smaller, um, maybe a different product type, but not leave their neighborhood. Well, this code starts to encourage that. Um, and then finally, just the, um, uh, the missing middle, the accessory dwelling units, and then the by-right review opportunity for multifamily residential. Um, if you look at affordable housing, it's not just the housing costs, it's transportation costs. So, um, encouraging density and densification on our transit corridors is going to have people have access to transit. They may not have to own a car. If they don't have to own a car, maybe they have more money available in their budget for housing costs to balance that out. And finally, our code asks for, encourages bike lanes and walkable neighborhoods. And the third major component of a budget, when we talk about affordable housing, has been healthcare costs. And hopefully, maybe over time, the bike lanes and the walkable communities makes us a healthier community. That's what we talked about with the age-friendly communities group. If we, over time, improve the health in our communities, then maybe we're reducing healthcare costs on a household basis as well. So there's a lot of it that goes into, um, you know, what is affordable for, for a family. And it's, I know the standard definition is thirty percent of their income going towards housing costs, but I argue, I don't know that that necessarily defines affordable for someone, because it's a percentage of your total income. Thirty percent of a very low income is not a lot. Is that still affordable? I don't know. So we're, we're trying to address it through multiple attributes. We may have to increase subsidies. My hope is if we can spend less on maintenance and on nuisance cleanups and that, maybe more of that money can go towards affordable housing goals in the city. I, I don't know. That, that's for our council to decide. But those, those are, those have been our staff thoughts on it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question, Mike, about, um, about monument signs. The, uh, the August two thousand and seventeen version of the draft, uh, and now the draft that you've just presented, or we're being presented, um, have there been changes in height requirements or for monument signs in the city? Has that changed?
Not that I'm aware of. And I, my understanding, my recollection is that the monument signs match what was adopted about now five years ago, um, the last sign code changes that we made. We implemented the, uh, pre-standing sign overlay district on the whole city. And this code prohibits pole signs just like that existing overlay district does. Um, so I, I'm not aware of any changes between current code and this regarding monument signs.
The, the, the graphic in the, in the August two thousand and seventeen, as opposed to the graphic that you showed today, a drawing of a monument sign went from like this to like this.
Mm-hmm.
And that stimulated the question.
The drawings weren't accurately reflecting our requirement for the base of the sign. And also, it didn't extend the full width of the sign in the previous draft. So that, that graphic did change in this. Just to clarify, that our standards say the base mon, of the monument sign has to be as, as wide as the sign. So you can't have a very narrow base and effectively have a pole sign under the code. It, it does require it to be the same width as the sign itself. And so those graphics were, were updated in this draft to address those. To better reflect the standard.
Thanks. I have another question, please, um, about burying utility lines. Where does that occur in, uh, in the document?
Utility lines aren't specifically, um, addressed by the zoning ordinance. Um, the streetscape standards, it's not a citywide, there is not a citywide requirement for undergrounding utilities. Frank, can you, I don't recall that being in this draft, a citywide-
Yeah.
-undergrounding of utilities in this, this draft. It would still fall under the, just the downtown, or under the, um, uh, underground utility district is what we'd be referring to.
Okay. I bring that up because every time one of these comes in the, in this overlay district, it's, it's, it's the same discussion over and over and over again. And that's, that's a recurring concern for everybody. And I think at some point in time, uh, that's something that council needs to consider as well.
Mike, and one of the things to-
Could you come up here, Frank?
One of the elements that, um, the code is, and obviously addressing, is, um, the tax abatement, uh, design guidelines. So with tax abatement, undergrounding is certainly an expectation. And if you consider, you know, multifamily projects, commercial projects that are incentivized to meet our, our, our standards as they are going to come out in, in the new code, uh, one of the expectations will be to look for undergrounding.
Thank you, Frank.
I had a question. You mentioned definition of cemeteries and made reference to if there was some commercial scattering of ashes. So how, how does that affect, like, if someone in their backyard?
Well, again, it's, it's really more the state regulations on what definition of a cemetery, but it's basically any, any burial or scattering where there's a fee for, for that. It technically becomes a, a cemetery under the state, state code. So that doesn't mean you can't have a private burial ground-
For your pad or-
-family. But like, if you are establishing something where you're accepting a fee, I believe under the state code, it, it qualifies as a cemetery. And once it becomes a cemetery, there's an obligation to, to protect that area. So this code proposes that when we're doing scattering grounds, that, or cemeteries, that those are legally described areas, and we're reviewing the location of those and are requiring, um, perpetual maintenance agreements and things like that as part of that use. So it's, it's tightening up some, um, potential holes in the ordinance today.
And I had kind of a follow-up on questions that you're answering about affordable housing. Would you say, Mike, that the language that is being proposed in our code is consistent across our neighbor, our, the metro area? Why is Des Moines share, as you stated, you know, the greater portion?
Well, I don't know if other jurisdictions are putting square footage minimums on them. I would argue that based on sale prices, average sale prices outside of Des Moines compared to Des Moines proper, I would argue they're not having an issue meeting the square footages that we're proposing. There is a definite difference in the valuation that's getting, that's getting built. We did have a developer last night, it's a national builder, wanting to come to the Des Moines metro, um, and they are looking at building thousand-foot homes, slab construction with a garage, but no basement, um, would like to build many units in, in the Des Moines metro. Um, to date, they're looking at Des Moines. They've not secured properties in any of our suburbs that we're aware of. I couldn't hear last night, they said Pleasant Hill or Pleasantville, because the other cities they knew, they said were Perry and Grinnell. So I wasn't quite certain exactly. I was across the room when he said it. And I said, I said Pleasant Hill today, and somebody said, no, I heard Pleasantville. Anyway, we'll, we'll continue to talk with him. But when we asked, uh, actually, one of the citizens that was at the meeting asked last night, um, have you looked at Waqee or West Des Moines? And, uh, they said, oh, heavens no. The lots are sixty thousand dollars each out there. We can't afford to build out there. So, again, this isn't to pit neighbors. We have to address affordable housing as a metro. And, uh, but, um, Des Moines is not the only solution to that. I think we're doing a lot in the code to address affordable housing that, um, others could follow. But I, I just don't know that necessarily the single-family detached model is the only tool to address that. And so I think that's why our code is, is being more comprehensive in it. Thanks.
One, hey, one question. So it looks like, under rooftop mechanical equipment, you want both now, that A, it's out of the sightline from the street and has screening. That seems different than the way it's been in the past. Um, I'm not sure why you need both and if you're-
Yeah.
-require screening.
Well, there's a, there's an enhancement on it, and I, I think it's mainly to address, we've had issues where they say it's not visible from the street, the adjoining street, but you go two blocks away and you can see the rooftop mechanical equipment lined up on the rooftop. So this is an enhancement of our existing rooftop mechanical screening. And I know we've had these discussions about, should we just say, screen to the height of the equipment all the way around? So, but this is an enhancement of that provision. You are correct.
Good.
When you talked about the short-term regulation on, you know, like the Airbnb kind of platform, where is, where can I find that?
So, um, the short-term rentals are, are a use, so it's in chapter one thirty-four. And it is, the section number is, uh, it's under the accessory uses section. So you have the board, you have your home occupations in the- So you have the board, you have your home occupations in the accessory uses, and then you have the short-term rentals are...
I'm curious what Des Moines says, because I, you know, we hear about a lot, especially in my industry, across the country, all the issues. You know, whether there's a competition with hotels or just, you know, rentals. So I'm just curious more about that.
So those short-term rental regulations are in Chapter 134, Article 3, and it's Section 3.8.3.
Thank you.
And, again, it goes on for about a page and a half, almost, well, it is almost over two pages of regulation on the short-term rental. And that's where you'll find the owner occupancy for, I believe, 270 days a year. And limits on the number of days it can be leased or rented.
What will we be covering in our next session?
Well, I wanted to leave that available if this was to give you an overview. Some, I think everybody came and got their code, but a couple may not have. So the idea was we'd do the overview and a few questions, and then give you time to look at it, see you look at it, bring questions again to the next meeting. And, again, just kind of continue that familiarity with the code. There's a lot of change to this. I mean, it's, I said, there's angst in 1965, I wasn't here, but I'm sure there was when the code was adopted. And there's angst now. And so I just think the more people get familiar with the code and have time to look at it, know where things are at in it, the better that will get. And again, it's not going to be perfect. And I fully expect there to be amendments to this code. But I would much rather have our staff time spent implementing a new code with better standards than trying to simultaneously write reports for three different boards and commissions for a majority of projects, and find solutions to a broken code, and try and write a new code, and work out all the issues with a new code. And I think at some time, you just kind of have to hit the restart button, and just say, we're going to do our best, and move things forward, and the process is better in the existing code, it's easier to find information, and then let's work on fixing what people say doesn't work about this code going forward. And hopefully, staff will have time to work on other things that the commission and the council have asked us to be working on. We've got a historic preservation plan that needs to be done for the city that's been on, it's in the comp plan, but it's not a priority, because we don't have the resources to do it right now. Things like that. There's a lot to do. There are a lot of things in that comp plan we'd like to do, but this is the one we've been charged to do right now, and we got to get past it. Yeah.
I had one more process question. So most of all the things that have to do with the 30% increases and whatever, say they have to be approved by community development director. That always been that way, or in the past was it more of your role, in your position? And then maybe explain to me kind of how you fit into this versus Johansson and...
Yeah. I think almost all the references now are community development director. And the code under the community development director section in the city code allows delegation of authority. So like, community development director delegates the authority to the building official to implement the building code. And he delegates the authority to the zoning enforcement officer to do enforcement of zoning and rental codes. And ultimately, my role has been, it's been delegated to me to do a lot of the planning, administration activities, zoning changes, things like that.
But anticipate that it's staying the same?
Yeah, I mean, that's the way it's drafted in this code, so unless there's a change in structure, that would be amended at that point. So, based on today's knowledge.
It sounded like you're suggesting that you'll have job security based on...
Pardon?
It sounded like you're suggesting there will be job security based on what...
Yeah, I'm not really, that's not my purpose of writing a code like this. Let me tell you, it's challenging. And I love it, but I'm ready to be done with it, I can tell you that. I'm ready to move on and be able to do better, more planning activities for the city long-term, than just focus on a zoning code. So...
Madam Chairperson, I think we should say a hearty congratulations to you and staff. You've had such a wonderful attitude. You've, you're smiling when you're standing up here. And I can't imagine what a task this has been, so...
Well, we do have a great team. And I, there, some of them are sitting here, but I cannot say enough. I had to stand up yesterday and explain this to folks, and...
We saw you on television.
But there's been, but I'm just saying, we've had a team from the legal department, the building department, our planning staff, neighborhood planning staff, all have been working on it. And, again, this is like other duties as assigned, right? We're still processing applications. We have an agenda starting in about three minutes that, we're doing two meetings a month and all that, so, and Board of Adjustment and Historic Preservation. And Glenn is also doing economic development agreements, and working with Economic Development Department. And our OED office has helped with this. I mean, it's been a comprehensive team that's worked on it. So I kind of get to explain it, but make no doubt about it, there was team review of these provisions and thought of every comment that was submitted on the last draft. Was everything implemented that was requested? No. Flat out, it wasn't. But I guarantee you, we looked at everything and gave it consideration and made our best recommendation. I think it's a fair product that's out there. And ultimately, it'll be up to you and the council to decide whether or not to adopt it, and what changes. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right, if there's no other questions...
Stretch break?
Yeah, we'll have a 1.5 second stretch break. Don't you guys want to go home?
I am. Eat a pickle, I'm a cookie. I know. I really do.
Good evening. Welcome to our June 6th, City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission meeting. These are the rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is an advisory body to the City Council. The Council will hold a public hearing and make a final decision on all matters before the Commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats, unless denials or conditional approvals are appealed. Please contact the City Clerk or the Community Development Staff for details on Council hearings. Applicants are given 10 minutes to present their request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker being allowed a maximum of five minutes. An applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the Commission requests that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations for individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in City Government. Assistant listening devices are available for meetings in this boardroom. To better serve you, if possible, please notify the City at least three business days in advance at (283) 4209, should special accommodations be required. Plan and Zoning Commission meetings are broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7.1 or 7.2 for customers with that service. Transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled to and from Dart Central Station at 620 Cherry Street. To reserve your route, please call Dart On Call Scheduling at (283) 8136. Calls for trips will be accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. And please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. We have just completed our Commission work session on the zone code for this evening, and I believe we can establish that there is a quorum present. And now, is there action on the minutes of the May 16th Plan and Zoning Commission meeting?
I notice we have 69-page set of minutes, which I would move to approve.
All right. All those in favor of approving the May 16th meeting minutes, please raise your hand. Good? All those that wish to abstain, please raise your hand. Got it? And were there any nay votes? Seeing none, all right. The consent item on our agenda tonight is a request from Schimberg Company of Iowa for vacation of an adjoining segment of right-of-way north of the subject property running from Dixon Street to East 17th Street to allow assembly with the adjoining subject property. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to pull this from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there anyone on the Commission that wishes to hear this item? All right, we'll leave that in consent. And is there any action?
Move consent.
All those in favor of our consent item, please signify by raising your hand. Item number one, I should say.
Yep, item one.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. Now, it's my understanding for the public hearing items tonight that item number two, which is a request from PRKG 1212 regarding property at 304 East Walnut, wishes to continue the item to our next meeting, which is June 20th. Is the representative here tonight to affirm that? Is it your understanding that that is the case?
Yes, Chair. There's some substantial changes in the design that necessitate the continuation so we can act on something that's reflective of their intent.
What date?
The 20th. June 20th would be in the next meeting.
All right. And then, on that note, item number four, which is a request from Hubble Realty on the property located at 4500 Hubble, for several, let's see, they want to revise the existing future land use designation from Business Park to Low Density Residential, and they want to review an approval of the Seventh Amendment to the Baker PUD Conceptual Plan to allow development of 19.98 acres of agricultural land for a single-family residential subdivision. And it is my understanding that they are going to have a neighborhood meeting?
Yeah, they weren't able to get one scheduled prior to the hearing, so they're requesting a continuation so they can do that, which is part of our typical procedure, is that they accomplish that before you hear the item, so.
So they wish to continue to the next meeting as well, June 20?
Yes.
And is there anyone here representing Hubble Realty to affirm that? Seeing none, it is your understanding that?
Yes, we have confirmation in writing.
Okay. So, we have action to continue items number two and item number four to our June 20 meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor of continuing those two items to June 20, please signify by raising your hand. Is there any opposition? All right, thank you. That leaves us with item number three. This is a request from Hoyt Sherman Foundation for Appeal of an Administrative Denial of Site Plan, Hoyt Sherman Place Building Edition on Property Located at 1501 Woodland, to Allow Addition of Theater Scene Lot and Loft and Back of House. And I assume you can introduce this.
Chair members of the Commission, Jason Van Nessen with the city's planning staff. The aerial on the screen identifies the subject property, northeast, excuse me, northwest corner of Woodland and 15th Street. Hoyt Sherman Place, large property in the Sherman Hill neighborhood at the edge of downtown. Just quickly, a couple photographs. Looking from the street intersection to the north and slightly to the west, this is further up 15th Street, looking south, and then Bridle Row and kind of the northern edge of the property. The main part of the addition would go in this area. There is some other addition, bathroom facilities here, and then a small kitchen addition towards the back and kind of internal. And then a photograph looking down Woodland Avenue towards the west. As the Chair noted in the description, this is an appeal of administrative decision. How we got here is the process started with an administrative site plan. The initial thought that the level investment or the value of the addition was not going to exceed 50% of the value of the property. During our review of it, the information of the knowledge that the value was higher than initially anticipated was brought forth, and therefore, it triggered full site compliance with current standards. We'd had some dialogue about how to maybe work together as staff and applicant on finding some solutions to some of the things that we are typically looking for in a property in the downtown overlay, for utilities, burial, streetlights, urban edge, street trees. Those are the typical things that come up when we are doing a full compliance site plan. We weren't able to come to something that as staff that we felt we could approve. We try our best to work with folks, but we also recognize that we have a role to kind of hold to things that are typically expected by you and others that we report to. And felt that, well, because of that, we weren't able to come to something that we could approve as staff. And so, this is brought to you. The, I know the agenda is set up that it was an administrative denial, which sounds very combative or conflict. It's not that way at all. It's just something where we needed to bring it to you, and that term of administrative denial is, that's the code route to get to you in this case. So, what I'm gonna do, I'll show you quickly the site plan that we were reviewing, working with them on, just showing quickly the upper corner of the property where the impacted work is. And this is kind of the route we were going until we recognized the value of the property in relationship to the addition, which then triggered us to start looking at the whole I think when you look at this image, we, you know, we're moving from thinking about kind of this area up here to now thinking about the whole site in that list of things that we typically require. So, in the written staff report to you, what we had prepared as staff is we had looked at what we were working towards and wrote a staff recommendation with that. But we also incorporated the things that would, we were looking for through that process for you to be able to focus your discussion and think about what it is that you're willing to entertain, what you, you know, the applicant's asking essentially to waive all of these is, at least that's our understanding. So, to help the dialogue and help things move forward, keep this list in mind. They're gonna come up and give a presentation as to their position, what I'm not a hundred percent sure, what all they are or not interested in doing. I'm happy to come back up and talk about this a little bit further. We also did receive a letter today from the State Historic Preservation Office that focused on the fence requirement and their concern about the impacts of that potentially on the character of the overall site. And I think they used a term of the park-like setting. Wanted to bring that to your attention, not trying to conceal that, we did get it today. But be happy to, like I said, help the discussion move forward. And I think with that, unless you have questions for me, which it looks like Greg does, I was gonna turn it over, but.
Back to the valuation of the addition. My understanding is that it's also accumulative, since the beginning of the ordinance, it's cumulative projects that add up, and when those add up, so it's not just this. Wouldn't that be correct?
My understanding is, and that may be true, but I think in this specific case, we were looking at the value of the addition and the value of the property as its assessor information today. I don't know if Mike, if you have?
Is that the way it's interpreted, Mike?
Yeah, it is cumulative, but in this instance, the value compared to the assessed value, the value of the addition compared to the assessed value exceeded it on its own. But the question that was raised was, should we be using, by the applicant was, should we be using the assessed value as the true value of the structure? And so, they had proposed that we consider the insured or adjusted value based on insurance of the structure because of what it would cost to rebuild the structure at this level of ornate building architecture and finishing a performance venue and all of that. And clearly, those would be substantially higher than what the assessed value was. So, there was some debate over that. We talked about having flexibility in that. We suggested the fencing, not interior lot landscaping, suggested just focus on the perimeter. And that was kind of where we were headed, and then they indicated that that was not how they wanted to proceed, and so we said, well then, just, let's just take it to the Plan and Commission and have it reviewed. So.
I guess my point, though, was, if it is, if I am correct, that the, you would add previous projects, you know, the huge auditorium remodel and other things they've done, there's been a substantial amount of construction dollars spent, correct?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Jason, I have a question about sort of other government, I guess, review and compliance. The Hoyt Sherman Place is in the Sherman Hill Historic District, and this is a major change. Has the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this, and what was its finding?
We reviewed, or I shouldn't use the, I staffed the Historic Commission as well, and the Commission did review the additions and kind of the ramp work earlier in the project or earlier in this process. At that time, it was, we were thinking this was the administrative site plan. So, with regard to any sort of fencing treatment or that sort of thing, the Historic Commission has not seen that. So, if it is required or requested of by the Planning and Zoning Commission, they will need to go back to the Historic Preservation Commission for approval. The, there have been projects in the Historic District that have been approved with some level of fencing for commercial-level projects. Neither one of those projects, one did not move forward. It was the NDC's office building project that would have been for the Union Hall. I think that came before this Commission as well. There was some fencing with that, and then the other one is escaping me. I guess the Cathedral has some fencing, but that part of that, that parking lot at the Cathedral to the north of the NDC site is actually not in the local Historic District, so that fencing requirement for that parking lot was not reviewed by them.
My other question has to do, I believe this, in fact, I know, this project received federal money back, what, 10 years ago, something through an American Treasuries grant, and part of that was re-roofing and I think gutters and downspouts and some landscaping work as well. Were there any provisos that were included in that that this addition would not conform to?
I don't know the answer to that question. The applicant might be able to speak to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jason?
Thank you.
All right, well, we're ready to hear from the applicant. If you don't mind stating your name, sir, and address.
Mike Simonson, Simonson and Associates Architects, 1717 Ingersoll. In 14 years of being on this Commission, this is the third time I'm here, and I'm here because of a staffing issue. But I'm very delighted to come before you and talk about Hoyt Sherman Place. This has not been a contentious issue of any kind. The initial conversation boiled down to what is, and Greg is touching on it, what is the current value of the building? And if the work exceeds, stated in the information, if the current work exceeds 50% of the value of the building, that triggers site plan compliance. This project is a $4.5 million project. It's in the back of the building. We have an insurance value on the property. We're covering insurance of $20 million. That is exclusive of the art collection, the furnishings. That's just the building. City Assessors pages don't reflect the value of a property, and I'm convinced, I don't know if this is true, but I'm convinced if you're not-for-profit, they don't pay a whole lot of attention to that. The assessed value on this property is $3.1 million, and that hasn't changed since the 1990s. So, had we been able to come to an agreement that $4.5 million versus 20, or even if you add some of the past work that's been done, we wouldn't be here. Having said that, I'd like to walk through what we're proposing to do, and we're proposing to do quite a few of the things that are on the list. So, may I do that? I'd just like to walk through the project and that list, if you will, and indicate what we are willing to do and what we are not, either willing to do or able to do by law. So, I'm just gonna start, if I may, and go through a couple of images and describe the site plan and the work they're doing. Interestingly, historically, and this all starts with the parking lot, 15th Street went through the middle of this parking lot, and I don't know when that was changed. My guess is sometime after 235 was built, and to bring traffic around and through this neighborhood, that was, that effort was done. I have up here, so if I may start at the top of the building, we're proposing an addition, one-story addition in this area that's clad in brick, it's partially buried, and then a three-story addition in this area on the back of house. The intent of this project is to provide additional space for rehearsals. We're going to be moving the offices, which are currently in the mansion into this area that will allow us to restore, as a separate project, the bedrooms and the entire second floor of the mansion, and some event space. Certainly, events generate income, that helps to pay the bills. That will occur on Level 2 and a portion of Level 3. As I mentioned, 15th Street originally went all the way through. This little piece of street, after 15th Street was relocated, was renamed Bridle Row. There are about a half dozen, five houses or so homes in that area. One of the things that we're doing to enhance that this area is currently Bridle Row goes right through the parking lot. So, we have actually acquired this piece of ground from the city, and we are going to redirect with a curb Bridle Row to take Bridle Row out to 15th Street and landscape this area. So, that was a welcome from the neighbors to the north to be able to give them their street back, if you will, and not be part of a parking lot. What staff has requested, and why don't I just go through the list, and then I can touch on these item by item? Compliance with administrative comments, that's fine, we'll do that. Provision of street trees, parking lot perimeter plantings, and open space plantings. We do want to complete the street tree planting, so on the document that you see before you, the trees that are dark exist. The four trees that are light is what we would propose to install to complete this street planting, and very importantly, we propose to do a hedge row down along the entire perimeter of that parking lot. There is nothing there now except grass. What staff had asked us to do is a combination of metal fencing interspersed with the shrubbery. And Will, you mentioned that we had received Save America's Treasuries funding earlier. That requires us, because there is a federal easement on this land, that requires us to go to the state. Steve King administers this program, Will knows him well, and review the plan. We did that. And Steve's comment, in fact, that's the piece, I don't know, staff, is that going around for people to read? That was submitted.
Thank you. I can ask for answers.
Okay, thank you. Steve King is in full support of a shrubbery buffer, if you will. This is a rather complicated piece of property. Believe it or not, this wonderful mansion in a park on the hill, originally on the outskirts of Des Moines, falls within the downtown overlay district. That means buildings are tight to the street. It means a quote-unquote "urban edge." And our own ordinance allows a shrubbery row to form the urban edge, and that's what we're proposing to do to be in compliance with that piece. The corner here, the women's club has already adopted this to expand their rose garden and their lily garden, and again, I mentioned that we're proposing to take that hedge row all the way around.
Mike, move it up so we can see it. Thank you.
What about the rest of Woodland, Mike?
I'm sorry?
What about the rest of Woodland?
Well, what we're proposing to do is to come into this area and essentially screen the parking lot, and then there's a series of mature trees across the lawn. I can, let's see, I believe I have that illustration. This is taken off of an aerial photo of the much broader street, but we have mature trees throughout this lawn area. One interesting factoid, we're interested in introducing historic trees to the property. Hoyt Sherman was Abraham Lincoln's paymaster during the Civil War. He actually left Des Moines and was in Washington, DC. And we are obtaining from the Brenton Arboretum an Osage orange, and it's going to be groomed as a specimen tree, and it was started from a cutting from the Osage orange that actually overlooked Lincoln's tomb. It was planted the spring before he was buried, and sadly, it was removed last year. It needed to be removed. It was heavily damaged. Certainly, an old tree, but we were able to take cuttings. I say "we," the Brenton Arboretum, I'm also on that board. And we were, we are going to be a wonderful recipient of that tree. So, as some of these mature trees are aging and not looking their best, we're going to be planting the property so that 20 years from now, when some of these magnificent trees, trees that have been here since before, in, before this entire area was settled, we're going to have a story. So, there are mature trees, and again, this area was taken in the wintertime, but we have quite a few trees in that area. So, we are not proposing to put any more trees along that particular street frontage. Let me go back to my list, if I may. So, the ornamental fencing was rejected by Steve King, but again, he supports the landscape shrubbery because it would be historically accurate. The utility and service lines to the building shall be located underground. They actually are located underground. That was a requirement during the last project, and there is a transformer on this pole. The line goes down that pole and is buried underground to the building. So, that item is already satisfied. Item number five, all utility service lines in the adjoining right-of-way should be undergrounded. This is a topic of conversation. We already chatted about this. We're not able to do that with the exception of, I think, two poles, and I want to go through with you and describe this. We prepared this document that shows the existing poles, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 poles. The utilities are already buried on 15th Street. Interspersed with these poles are what I call the quote-unquote "historic" light fixtures. These are the fixtures, so this is taken on Woodland, looking up, you can see the mansion here, the theater here. This is about a 16-foot light fixture. Those were installed quite some time ago as part of the program for, for the Sherman Hill Neighbor Association. These are the balance of the poles that provide power. There is also a streetlight on top of those, so we have a streetlight here, we have a streetlight here. It's my understanding that when the neighborhood schmid, of which Hoyt Sherman Place has paid into that schmid and just signed another agreement for another 10 years, so I think one can argue that Hoyt Sherman paid for these fixtures, the desire was to remove those lights, and the Neighborhood Association was told that it could not do that. So, you might recall from past conversations that when power poles provide power to adjoining buildings, we cannot touch those. Why? Because if you were to underground the power to that building, then that building's owner is required by code to bring their entire building up to the current electrical standards. So, if we were to bury the line underneath Woodland, hook it up to their building, they have to bring up their buildings to code. That's not going to happen. This pole serves to the east and to the building across the street. This pole serves the house. This pole serves the apartment building. This pole serves the property to the west. This pole, we already talked about, we were asked to under- This pole, we already talked about, we were asked to underground it. There, I think, are two transformers on that pole. This pole serves the apartment building here. This pole serves the property to the north. So realistically, if we could bury anything, we could bury those two poles. So we would look at going down here, coming up, and popping back up, and everything else is overhead. It's an expensive proposition. It doesn't solve all the problem. We do not want to do that. Furthermore, item number six is calling for us to replace these one, two, three, four street lights, and I've just shown you an image here of the historic fixture and the fixture that we wanted to remove about 20 years ago. We don't want to have to pay to remove that head, replace it, replace that pole. We'd rather the fixture be removed, just remove the fixture. Why, why do we have two street lights? Maybe there's a reason, I'm not aware of that. So we are not in agreement with that. Item number seven, rooftop mechanical equipment. There is no mechanical equipment on the roof, and if there was, we would certainly screen it. Item number eight, I'm going to ask that the Historic Preservation Commission, I'm going to ask Robert Warren, who's the executive director, to come up and just discuss the conversation with York Tanser and that group. I speak quickly, I've gone through the list. Are there any questions of me before I turn it over to Robert, who might be able to provide a little bit more insight?
Mike, have you determined what the cost would be to remove these two poles that you identify but would prefer not to remove?
We have not. We know that just a light fixture is in the $10,000 range. These are more than light fixtures, they also carry the power. And therein lies the problem. And again, we would like for the fixtures themselves just to be removed. We, we don't understand why there's the redundancy.
And Mike, I didn't hear your response to number three.
Number three?
Yeah.
The ornamental fencing was not acceptable to Steve King's off with this, office with the state. The state administers the easement of the federal government. But again, he supports the shrubbery. We want to do that. So we will provide the buffer.
Okay.
Around the parking lot, all the way, all the way around.
Okay, thanks.
I'd like to introduce you to Robert Warren, the executive director of Hoyt Sherman Place.
Welcome.
Hi, good evening, thank you. I've been here three and a half years, and we've managed to turn the old girl around. For the first time in the entire history of Hoyt Sherman Place Foundation, in 1995, we've actually operated the last three years with theater operations in the black, which is what brought us to the point of needing this extra space.
Before you go on, I do believe we need your address for the record.
300 Walnut Street, number 143, Des Moines, 50309. Sorry.
Okay.
Yes, it is insured and evaluated at $20 million plus a $6.8 million art collection. And it's a private home. It's always been a private home. It was the home of Hoyt Sherman, and then it became the home of the Women's Club. So when you arrive, you feel like you're entering a home. One of the things we talked about was the pilot program or the pilot tax in the Schmid District. Hoyt Sherman Place is the only nonprofit on Sherman Hill since 1999 that's paid into that Schmid tax, over $14,000 for those streetlights. And to answer the question regarding those Cobra Head overhead lights, the, there is money in that account to pay for additional Black Pole antique vintage lights. But when they tried to do that, they were told that those Cobra Heads had to stay in place in order to provide the appropriate amount of light to the street to be in compliance with that street being a feeder route to Woodland Avenue. They could not be removed. And that was from Jack Porter. We also talked about the fact that that pilot tax does have an excess in there, but we paid for the additional matching street lamps up the sidewalk on the property through a grant from Prairie Meadows. So my big takeaway, I guess, is that one of the very first grants that we got when we started this project, which is now almost completely fully funded, we have one pending request on Wednesday to enhance Iowa. If we have a permit, we are shovel-ready, and we will get the last $600,000. And we will have the entire 4.4 million to begin construction and finish by January of 2020. The very first grant that we got was a leadership grant from the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines, and followed by the Ruann Foundation and two other major $200,000 requests because of the fact that Hoyt Sherman Place was re-engaging the front lawn and eliminating all barriers to participation, in particular, the Oak Ridge community across the street. It's an engaging space, and now we're being asked to put up a fence, which creates a barrier. And I just, I'm very emotional about it. We're ready to go. You can see how much time, Mike and I have been working on this for three years. We made every effort with the purchase of that 900 square feet from the city of Des Moines to make our Bridle Row neighbors happy and everybody else in the neighborhood. So I'd like to eliminate any barriers. I'd like to move forward, and I would love to have your support.
I believe we have a question for you.
So Mike had said that you were going to also mention, mention item eight. Is that a concern that Hoyt Sherman has? That's the, construction should comply with those.
Yes, I have met with York Tanser and talked with him. His email to me said, "It's obvious that the property valuation is high enough not to trigger the 50% issue. This is the surest way to finalize this problem. If that doesn't work, it's not going to get the support of HPC." They are also opposed to the fencing.
Any other questions from Mr. Warren? Do you have any?
I have a, maybe a comment, maybe a question. I'm not sure what it'll be when I get it out, but I personally actually prefer the hedging solution, as long as it's a, not only a perennial, of course, but one that through the winter still acts as a hedge and not a bunch of sticks. So you know, the right type of hedge, I think makes a ton of sense. I'm not sure what that is. The item that troubles me, so I'm curious why there's really honestly no movement on your guys' side, is the overhead lines and streetlights and poles and, you know, there's other folks in the Sherman Hill neighborhood that have been forced, much, much, much smaller projects, to deal with, you know, their wire or their streetlights or their poles. And, and I thoroughly personally understand the problems that you're talking about. I mean, I've been through this. I also understand that, oh, there's definitely a discourse between Jack Porter and the city about the street lighting. And my understanding is Sherman Hill is supposed to be doing a light study, and then the light study can prove light levels and get to the level of types of lights and amounts of lights, all that kind of stuff. And it seems to be in their court last time I talked to them. All that said, there's some owners, there's projects that have been through this board that, that they've put up bonds. And, you know, for future, once all that gets reconciled, which doesn't seem to be moving on a speedy pace. So it's troubling to me, this is a fantastic facility. I'm actually a member, you might kick me off after this, but I'm actually a member of Hoyt, and I love this facility. But I think there needs to be some movement on enhancing, editing, changing, making better, providing for the future, these overhead lines and poles. And to, and to do nothing and say, we're just not going to do anything, that's a struggle for me.
Well, my simple answer is of the nine poles, legally, we could only remove two. Those are, we could only remove two. All of the other lines provide power.
But on Ingersoll, they figured out a compromise solution, right? I think you were even involved with some of that. But along Ingersoll, and I'm not saying that's the right solution, black tape up a pole, but I just would love to see something.
Well...
I don't know what it is.
I don't know what it is either.
I personally think that's on you guys, and that'd be my, my position at the moment, is I think there should be something done.
Thank you, Greg. Any other, did you have one, the other Greg?
I was going to ask him if they, if they did something to the two of them, is that something enough? I'm just throwing that out there.
Maybe.
Could you say that again, Greg, please? I didn't quite hear what you said.
Which Greg?
You. I think you meant you, the Greg at the end.
I'm just throwing out there, because as Mike was going through it, the, according to their study, the only possibility were two of them that we could do something about. So my question to this Greg, my colleague Greg, is if they thought that they could move those two, is that enough of a, something to do? Based on his question.
Quite possibly. I mean, it's right at the front entry. I mean, maybe there's something that's going to be done there.
I'll unpack my thought. I, I personally think doing that would be something.
Would be what?
Would be something. I would be doing something. I know it's not cheap. I would hope you don't have to put up a Black Pole next to your streetlights.
Could I throw something out? And people can throw it away if they want. There's another aspect to this, and first of all, I applaud the city's staff for, for all of this. Because, and I'm willing to be corrected if I'm wrong, but I think the city of Des Moines owns the property. And my, as I remember, back in 1903 or whenever the Women's Club, you know, began there at the property, the city leased to the Des Moines Women's Club the property for $1. So I think legally, the city of Des Moines owns the property. And I'm, I mean, if somebody's going to contradict me, I'm willing to, you know...
No, the city was gifted the property by the heirs to the Sherman family in 1905, and they did lease it to the Women's Club, you're correct, for a dollar a year to add the two art galleries and raise the money and build the theater. But in 1990, the Women's Club was struggling to make ends meet, and so through an agreement with Fred Whites and several powerful attorneys, they created Hoyt Sherman Place Foundation in 1995. They sold one painting for $4 million to create an endowment, and the city relinquished all rights to the property to the foundation, and the Women's Club released all rights to the art and the art gallery and the theater and the parking lot, which they purchased themselves. So it's all been under complete control of Hoyt Sherman Place Foundation since 1995.
I think my comment was that if the city still owned the property, they're doing something that is appropriate for the city. Whether we, you know, whether this part of the city thinks that or not is another question, but it seems as if, from what we've talked about here, that in connection with what Mike has said, in what you have already done and in what you proposed to do, the only issue in terms of what the stack, the staff recommendations are, is this one item, number, what is it, number five? That we're talking about right now. Is that correct?
Sorry?
I have five and six, we're the continues.
They're asking to do the hedge in lieu of the fence.
Oh, yeah, that too, yeah.
So it's really a couple of things.
Yeah.
My comment about the fence is that the, the federal administrator for the property has said, "Don't do the fence because it is in..." You know, it's, so...
I agree, Will.
Any other questions from Mr. Warren or Mike?
Mike's itching to respond.
No, I'm, again, we can only affect two poles. I, I almost rather like the idea, if that's where this board is going, to bond. And if, if we're looking to work out a solution of burying power lines, and that's what everyone's interested in doing, I'm certainly in, in favor of that. Is there a better long-term solution? And a bond would cover the exposure of Hoyt Sherman Place, and possibly, it could be a bigger project. Rather than trying to do this piecemeal, because I can tell you, if we buried, if we, again, I, we cannot remove this line, we can go down underground to here and come back up. So conceivably, we can remove two poles. I also don't want to replace them with streetlights because it just, it just seems redundant to have one streetlight and 20 feet away is a streetlight that's 10 feet taller. I'm not aware of what the rule is or an ordinance that requires lighting. That lighting does not exist on 15th Street. It's all the period lighting. 15th Street has three times the traffic that Woodland has. But if, if this board is headed in that direction, and I'd rather do nothing, if this board is headed in that direction, I like the idea of bonding.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, there's just been enough talk about the streetlights on Woodland, I, so I'm, I just, you know, airject. I do want to clarify that the reason that there are the poles intermixed together on Woodland Avenue is the classification of the street. I've confirmed this with our engineering department. The ornamental poles are not tall enough to spread the light far enough for a street of that level. And I believe on 15th Street, there are the taller fixtures on the other side of the street, and so that's why you don't see that doubling up on the west side of 15th Street. So just wanted to share that with everybody.
So just to clarify, you're, you're saying that you can't even remove those two because they have the higher lights?
No, what I'm saying is if we take any of the, the poles out on... To answer your question, if we remove any of the streetlight fixtures on Woodland Avenue, our thought as staff was, you know, if this was all coming out, you put back in the black, you'd have the taller streetlight fixture, and then you'd have the other. We're talking about something hybrid now. And of course, when we were doing our staff report, we didn't have as much information as we, and that's the, the beauty of public hearing process. But that was the basis of the staff recommendation, is it was all coming out, and then you could replace those with the current standard.
Currently, I like, I like the job, I like the project. I'm, you know, obviously, when it comes to the lighting, I'm not that hung up on it. I want to see progress with Hoyt Sherman, they've done a great job. It's a great venue in the city of Des Moines. Obviously, a lot of the reasons why we're here is because Pope County put an estimate on it that they haven't touched in a lot of years, and that triggered this off, and that's why we're here. Not a big deal to me. So I support the, the project. I think the applicant's done a good job in their presentation. It seems like they're really close, except over the fence, but they're willing to play ball with the hedges, and, and I'm satisfied with that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone else in the audience who also wishes, who wishes to speak in favor of the project. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who has questions or concerns about the project as presented? All right, seeing none. This is a chance to come back and rebut the non-conversation, but if there's anything else that you want to add.
Hey, Mike?
Yes.
Do the five and six, are they going hand in hand? Is that kind of what I'm hearing here? The black LED streetlight fixtures along Woodland and tearing down poles and putting utilities underground?
Well, they could go hand in hand, only in that the existing streetlights that are higher are attached to power poles, they're not light poles. So they carry power as well as having a rather crude fixture, if you will, a Cobra Head that's attached to those poles.
Right. So on the bonding idea that's being discussed, how do you envision that vis-à-vis five and six?
To me, the bonding would allow for a more comprehensive project, but I think it needs to be tied to the undergrounding of the lines that feed adjoining buildings because until that happens, nothing will happen. But, you know, to Greg's point, you know, people get together and there could be a comprehensive plan for Woodland, some of the Schmid money could go toward that. It would take a monumentous effort, but I, again, I'm interested in a long-term solution and doing it right, and not trying to piecemeal something.
Right, and I might be slow on the uptake here, but when you say bonding for, bonding for what?
For the undergrounding. For the undergrounding of the overhead lines. I struggle with the streetlights, it's...
And replacement of the streetlights to the city's satisfaction. Because the, where we are right now is, there's two streetlights, there's the short Sherman Hill light, and then there's the big overhead.
So let's add a third.
Why not?
So, God, I'm not sure.
But, so remind you, we don't have a motion on the floor, we're still in public hearing.
No, we're still talking, Mike.
Okay.
So, so, okay. Six contemplates five occurring. It seems to me that the poles come down, the lights that are there, piecemeal come down, the historically accurate poles come down, and we put up LED streetlight fixtures?
Those would stay.
Oh, they would stay.
The historic ones would stay, and you'd just intersperse the tall ones as necessary to provide street lighting.
Yeah, I'm just asking questions here because I'd like to see how to get this done. I agree with Rocky. I agree with some of the ideas I've heard around here. Let's get this done. It's a great venue, it's a 501(c)(3) organization that contributes vastly to the arts in the city of Des Moines and has for years and will for years to come. And it seems unfortunate to me that this property value and current value thing is some amorphous piece that we don't have a number on because if we had $9,001,000 as the city assessed value, we wouldn't be having this discussion on a $4.5 million project.
Right.
We don't know that number. I, with Rocky, overlook it, to heck with it. To rebuild that place for a cost of, on a cost of replacement policy, I don't think your $20 million's gonna do it. So that's one thing. The other thing is, it just sits on the edge of the downtown overlay, kind of on the toe of what's otherwise a residential community. And so the two unfortunate things in my mind are, we've got this value thing that's driving our discussion, and the downtown overlay piece where, I mean, Sherman Hills surrounds you. Anyway, I think we need to figure out a way to get this thing through. I noticed that it takes eight of us on any modification that we make to try and run this through, and I saw Greg had some, something to say, he was raising his hand down there when I started shooting off my mouth.
Well, if people are interested, I'd throw out a, what do you call it?
Motion?
Motion, thank you.
Okay, I need to close the public hearing first, right? Yes. So I close the public hearing. Now.
So this motion may be as much for discussion as it is for vote. Someone could help me get this right as I go through this, because I toot Jack when I get to the end here. But I appreciate the sandwich. Recommend approval with the following modifications. Item one would stay as written. Item two would be revised to be only applicable to along 15th Street and the, actually just 15th Street. Item three would be revised to be, to allow hedging as an urban edge, as approved by the planning administrator. Item four, I think can be removed, because my understanding is it's been done. Item five and six, I would probably remove and replace with, that the owner provides a bond in the amount necessary to replace the two poles that they can replace and the associated lines between them underground. And that that agreement gets worked out with the planning administrator, because I know there's other properties that they've worked out durations of time and different things that are applicable, which gives hopefully the neighborhood time to get its act together. Because I do also agree that LED light fixtures of the Cobra type, I mean, of the archetype, don't make sense here at all. Number seven, I believe, I want to say is not applicable, but we can leave it if that makes folks feel better, but it sounds like there is no rooftop mechanical, it can be And number eight, I think stays, I think. I don't think there's an issue with number eight. That would be my...
I had a question, number three. So are you suggesting that we, the provision of ornamental fencing be deleted to allow for the hedging?
Correct. Yeah, the phrase, I don't see it in here, is urban edge, and that the urban edge around the parking lot on both 15th and Woodland be allowed to be hedging as approved by planning administrator.
Okay.
Just clarify, Greg, I just, I think I heard, I just want to make sure, on your reference to just the 15th Street requirement, that's item two, which is the street trees and the parking lot perimeter plantings and open space plantings, but on three, the hedge would be both street frontages, right?
Both 15th and Woodland.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have a question. So you're bonding for the two poles and lines, but the LED streetlight fixtures you are deleting completely and from the discussion?
So the bond should be in the amount necessary to remove those two light poles, put in two new light poles, plus the undergrounding.
Oh, okay.
And can sit, they can work out the duration.
Two poles with lights, whatever they are.
Hopefully, they're not archetypes.
And that entire is five and six. Okay. All right.
Jack? I say, good job.
Real good job. And just for clarity, it sounded like you were hedging on number seven, but does your motion include seven or?
I'm relying on what they're saying, if there is none, but if it makes folks feel better, I'd take a friendly minute to leave it in there, that's fine. I'm gonna...
The applicant said that you'd screen it. I thought, I thought he said he would screen it.
We can leave it in then. Leave in seven.
The motion on the floor is to recommend the following. That the owner comply with all administrative review comments of the city's permit and development center. Provision of street trees, parking lot perimeter plantings and open space plantings as approved by the planning administrator along 15th Street. Provision to allow hedging around the street side perimeter of the parking lot and landscape gaps in the, oop, no, no landscape gaps in the fencing, correct?
Just hedging along.
Just hedging.
Rather than the fence for an urban edge on 15th and Woodland Streets.
Okay.
Parking.
And the two, what about the two-thirds frontage? No. Okay. Number four has been deleted. Number five and six are combined, where the owner will provide a bond to replace two poles, plus the underground, this is the part, I'm not sure I got this correct, but plus the underground, is this the underground service lines?
This would be to, if I wrote right, to remove and replace two of the streetlight poles. Remove two streetlight poles or replace with new poles, and then bury the lines between those two poles.
And can I ask a clarifying question for that? So that bond would be triggered by a decision in the neighborhood to simplify, to do the whole thing, and then?
Two items, if I could. One is it would be the lines to the poles and the lines between the poles, just to clarify.
Your point is?
The duration of time, I think, should be negotiated between the owner and the planning administrator. I know they've done that on some other projects in the Sherman Hill area.
So they can say, "If you don't have it done in two years, click."
So, just a public commentary, the appropriate amount of pressure needs to get put on the Sherman Hill neighborhood to get that study done. They have the money to do some of these things, so.
All right, I just want to make sure everybody, does everybody understand that? Okay, good. And then number seven remains the same. And number eight remains the same.
Correct.
All right, so that's our motion. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Looks like eight.
Okay. Just for the record in the opposition, and one extension. Tyler, you got the extension, okay. Thank you, everyone. And Mr. Warren, one thing that I was gonna comment on your comments was that in addition to supporting the Oak Ridge neighborhood, which yes, I totally agree, Hoyt Sherman has, Hoyt Sherman has also been the scene of many Des Moines public school graduations, including our Escavo School and also Edmonds. So it's very well-used. All right, thank you. That concludes our public hearing tonight. Mike, is there anything in the directory reports?
No, just thank you for your time. We will plan to meet again at 4:00 in two weeks. Continue to review the code, bring any questions that you have on that. And thank you for your time tonight.
And commitments, any additional requests? Seeing none, I'll move to meeting adjournments.
We can figure two hours over.
Okay.